Fine.
I did give you updates, so.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Commissioners' Work Session on Monday, September ninth. Commissioner, Commissioner Bellows and Commissioner Farrow with me, Commissioner Harvey will be here shortly, but we will go ahead and get started with item one, Discussion and or Action for Approval of the Minutes of the Commissioned Work Session Held on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, item two, Discussion Regarding NUEA Contracts, Stephanie Russell, Ashlyn Tuckett, Chris Crockett, Lauren Thomas, and we also have Jessica Clark here. I stumbled over your last name for some reason. Okay, Stephanie?
Um, I'm actually just gonna let Lauren and and Crockett jump in. We've been working with them to get this contract revised, working with Davis County. And I think we're at a final draft.
Yeah.
Lauren, and if we, we've blasted from greatest how many we are.
Yes, they got back to us yesterday and I did update with their changes, so we have a couple of questions, probably add in a few things after we talk to you. But, uh, yeah, this should almost be final.
Would you like to go?
Sure, yeah. Um, okay, so should we start through the whole thing? What, what's the best way to do it?
Maybe we'll just do a major outline and then just point out the changes that we made, um, and just how the other contracts are gonna work.
Okay. Great, so yeah, we can just start at the beginning. So obviously, this contract is between us, Davis, and NUEA. Um, to continue with some of the services that we've had, and so starting at the beginning, um, we wanted to ensure that NUEA and Davis, we were all considered separate entities in this agreement. Uh, one change to the Board of Advisors, previously had listed the Board of Advisors and kind of given an outline of that board. What we did is we, um, changed the contract to just reference the bylaws of NUEA. So, um, the bylaws in NUEA set up their board, and, uh, so this way with the contract just mentioning the bylaws, um, NUEA can make changes to those bylaws as needed, um, and the board composition really is in the hands of NUEA. So, we just simplified it so that it just references the bylaws which will attach as an exhibit. Too many questions on the board?
No.
Okay.
For me.
Okay. So this next part, and this is where we want some feedback from you, is the Strategic Marketing Plan. So this is something that NUEA will have to submit to us every year, detailing what their plan is. And we, one thing we wanted to ask you is what things you would like to see specifically in that plan? Um, and this clause also like on to places, um, failing to submit that, uh, plan every year.
So you don't have anything right now? It doesn't look like there's just a.
Yes. To see exactly what you would like to, uh, see in that.
So on that last line where it says the SMP shall include the following, is that?
Yeah.
Like a list of things?
Yeah, probably easiest, clearest. We want it to be clear so that they know exactly what to put in that plan. There's no confusion or question.
I'm gonna look to you, Commissioner Farrow, and Stephanie on your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think that's what was discussed over the last couple of months, so, man, I don't think it's a change in that, right? So they're gonna provide that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And UEA is going to?
Yes, they'll provide us with the plan. They'll have to present it each year so that we know exactly.
I thought he'd already sent you, I thought he'd already sent that to you like a month or two ago.
The plan itself?
The, the marketing plan and.
He's, he's sent over reports from the last years, but this one will be coming up with a specific plan for this upcoming year. Um, so I don't know if I've seen a copy of what he plans on accomplishing for twenty twenty-five.
And that's what would be inserted here on this item?
Yes. Well, and it would be, um, and I guess one question I have, and sorry, I wish I, I should have brought this up earlier, is presenting the plan for the county to consider, um, they have to work with us during the respective budget process. But the only thing I worry about is in December, we're already gonna be pretty much done with the budget process. So I don't know how we're gonna determine how much to fund NUEA for each respective year without, uh, knowing what that SMP plan is during the budget cycle instead of December. I don't know if you wanna change it to like September. You, you see where I'm struggling because you're not gonna know how much money they're gonna need if you don't know what their goals are for the year.
Well, he's already sent in his budget. He gave that to us, I think, last May or June when we met with Davis County, I think.
So I think for twenty-two.
Which was the seventy-five thousand we budgeted, taking seventy-five thousand for down from the hundred and fifty for this coming year.
But so that would be for the rest of this year and then next year.
And next year.
Okay.
So that's why you guys already said and agreed to by Davis County.
Yeah, so I guess when it comes to the twenty twenty-six budget, when do you want him to come in and start working with you to determine what he's gonna do for that year?
For twenty twenty-six?
For twenty twenty-six, and then how much you wanna allocate? Will you be able to make that determination before he submits his plan on December first?
I think we need the plan submitted. We need.
I would think so, yeah.
Does the plan submitted earlier?
Yeah. I don't know why you couldn't have the plan submitted by first of June, or, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Before budgeting, okay.
Yeah.
So it's before budgeting.
Yeah, just so you have a night, because we did that with Visit Ogden.
Right.
We have to think of during the budget cycle, or maybe you formalize the plan, you know, later in December in conjunction with the actual budget, but just have like a draft, um, presented during the budget cycle, and then you can work with him to modify goals, add, take away.
Are you thinking end of June?
That's end of June first, yeah, I, I think he'd be ready to do, you know, whenever. I, probably the end of first of July, and so that, I think we probably oughta make it. If we did it July one, he'll know what the state funding is if that drops.
Okay.
So if we did it then, because that request, if all of a sudden the state goes away, that request could go up, so.
So an example of one to, that you can mirror is T-Tab. So T-Tab, and they're actually not following their own policy, what they're, you're hearing today, they're a little late, but usually, they're supposed to present a draft proposal to you, like, I believe, July one. And then they take feedback from the Commissioners, and then you give final approval, I think, like in September or something like that.
Before a budget.
Yeah, before the budget, and then that way you can go in and out and know how much to allocate to, um, T-Tab each year. I think we do the same thing with Visit Ogden.
Why don't we keep it consistent?
Yeah.
That'd be my suggestion, Madam Judge.
Yeah, I think.
If we did July one, then we've kinda do the same process.
We like a draft on July one.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Um, you'll confirm it sometime in September.
Before we start the budget, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
I think that's good timing.
Okay.
And Lauren, in response to your question about what it should include, I think, pull that, let's just yank that out, because it says right here in the very beginning, um, it shows submitted annual strategic marketing plan containing a description of marketing goals and metrics for the NUEA. So just check it out. Yeah, and that way we can work with what it, as the, you know, as the year is dictating, we'll just work.
So remove that last line with that.
I don't see we need to put anything specific in there.
Yeah, as long as he has an approved SMP, and that's your firm before you can receive funding for the next.
Yeah.
Does that need to be added in here? It says, um, approval or acceptance is a condition precedent for renewal of the agreement. But it doesn't say anything about budgeting. Do we need to add the budget?
Yeah.
Piece in there?
So I think, so are you going back to that paragraph C?
Yep.
So I think we're gonna change the dates on that, and change it to, um, July first for draft.
Okay.
And then if it doesn't result in an agreed upon, um, SMP by September, then the agreement automatically terminates. I mean, of course, the county can extend and work with them.
Okay. So is it just implied then that the, that the agreement includes their budget request? Or does that need to be still?
It does, in that, in the very first couple of sentences, corresponding budget will be presented and.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And your, yeah.
Budgeting process.
Right, that's good. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so then, party on the management, um, so NUEA, obviously, and their independent contractors will be in charge of managing. Um, Davis did want to be sure that we included the second sentence there, that NUEA's performance will, um, shall not duplicate any efforts made by the county. Um, and then, again, this, this kind of reiterates some of the things in the SMP, but including what NUEA shall also provide, highlight this program of work, but they have a budget. Uh, quarterly financial reports. Are you good with receiving quarterly reports? Is that okay? Okay, annual report and audit for the previous year, including all the forms that they need to provide for the IRS. And then a monthly email report would come to you, um, detailing what they've been doing. Does that sound all good?
I'm fine with that, you agree with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, okay, the site selection consultants, this we pretty much have the exact same, no changes here. Um, to part E, add public relations and promoting, and I'm pretty sure this was, this was all, that's exactly same. I think I just broke it out, so it was a little bit easier to read. Um, generating awareness, placing editorial content, um, in business publications, continued branding, sending targeted mailings to specific lists, and then updating and maintaining their website presence as well as social media. Part G, industry marketing, NUEA shall ensure Utah's value proposition is understood by key companies. So again, all just, uh, working with the community and these key individuals, companies. Part H, local industry expansion and retention, uh, NUEA shall connect with local and existing businesses to better support their needs. And, um, again, part two, just making sure that this is something that they'll talk about in their SMP. Um, research, economic research will be foundational to the success of this partnership, and setting some, um, standards, annually producing a regional labor profile, and up, updating and maintaining a real estate database, which this wasn't included before, so nothing new there. Regional coordination and collaboration, this is all, uh, the same. Um, there will be monthly coordination meetings with the counties and their economic development departments to talk about ongoing projects. And, um, enter space after three, sorry. Um, K, regional corporate recruitment success, this is the exact same, we didn't make any changes here, again, with the quarterly updates. And the term, okay, so the term, um, as we just said, this, this term is going to go through the end of this year and into twenty twenty-five, all through twenty twenty-five, because as we mentioned, we already worked out the budgeting process. So the first term goes till the end of twenty twenty-five, and then after that, there will be an opportunity to renew, um, this term for, we set up to five additional one-year terms. Is that okay?
It's okay with me. I do have one question, though. Um, so if this is an, is this a new agreement? Because our last one's expired?
The last one was with, um.
EDC Utah.
EDC Utah. And so that one expired in June of this year, but Chris understood that, uh, there wouldn't be any additional compensation, um, up until for the end of the year, but it is a new, entirely new agreement with new entity.
Okay, and so we're okay to make, to enter this agreement with that entity? Is it, is it something that we had, or we should have gone out to?
I don't, I, I.
I just, I'm not sure, this is, might be a unique contract, but I'm just wondering, is it something that?
So, so when we set this up, we contract, we needed somebody to oversee.
Right, right.
The startup, so we contracted with the EDC Utah, and they brought in Chris and his group, and then it was decided by the board after the first year, with EDC Utah no longer doing what they do, they're going, because of the state contract, they're going into the chamber. We said, we don't wanna be part.
Sure.
So, NUEA is direct opposite of the Salt Lake Chamber, so, you know, we're northern Utah, so we just decided, the board voted and agreed that we're gonna create our own nonprofit, so we created, NUEA is now private, uh, four oh one C three.
Okay, so we're allowed to just.
So, yeah.
We can confirm that there's no procurement requirements, but I don't think there are, I'm not aware of any other nonprofit in the area that provides this type of service.
So, but we can. Just wanna make sure that we weren't violating anything, so.
Yeah, I'll confirm with you.
Okay, thank you.
And can I just clarify, so that seventy-five thousand, I, my understanding was that was just through the end of twenty-four, does that actually go through to twenty-five?
Well, it, we brought that to our budget this year, right?
I think you're.
Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, because Chris said for the entire year, when I called him, he thought it was seventy-five thousand, and he wasn't expecting any more compensation for the remainder of twenty twenty-four. So he could be coming back for, uh, budget requests for the twenty twenty-five, uh, calendar year.
So, so we funded, our agreement was to fund a hundred and fifty, both Davis and Weber. We agreed again at the last board meeting that we both fund seventy-five for this year, and, and we get the budget sessions based upon what Davis does. We may fund, you know, we may put it in a hundred and fifty, but fund seventy-five, I mean, it's, we'll have to have that discussion.
Yeah.
But I think the idea right now, as long as the state participates, there's no reason for the counties to put more than seventy-five. That's my opinion, but.
But that'll be addressed in, so is it addressed? Gage, is it addressed in, um, their marketing plan that, that they've submitted already?
With the seventy-five?
Yeah.
My understanding when I talked to Chris was the seventy-five was for twenty twenty-five.
As well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
That's what he said last time.
So I'm pretty sure this, well.
So he's not expecting.
Seventy-five for both twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there'd be no additional funding for twenty-five?
Correct.
Correct, yes. Okay.
As long as that.
We just, we wanna verify that with Davis, but I'm pretty sure that's what they're planning.
Okay.
Each year.
I think so too, Paige.
That's what their attorney said to me.
For the next year. So I'm just worried that the late threaten, it just needs to better clarify that for the first term, there's no.
There was seventy-five thousand was previously allocated, a hundred and fifty thousand between both commissions. Has been agreed that that.
Would go through the initial term.
There'll be no other payment for this first initial term?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, that's. I think that's what, uh, everybody agrees to.
Okay. Make sure it's back in there.
And then, did we have, do we need a statement in there that talks about factors that will be considered in the budget, or is it just a given, like such as state contributions, um, existing reserve, uh, amounts? Um, or is that just something that will naturally occur when we go through the budget cycle with Chris each year?
For twenty twenty-five?
No, uh, not for twenty twenty-six, because if we say, he's got five hundred thousand in his reserve account right now.
Right.
So if you, the commission wants him to draw down upon that, I assume you're just naturally gonna have conversations related to that when you do the twenty twenty-six budget.
Well, that's why we reduced his budget by the hundred and fifty.
So, but do you need anything in there that says like factors that will go into consideration for the budget or state contributions, or?
No.
That's just part of the negotiation.
Yeah, I mean, basically, that majority, that's all state money. That's not our money, so if we, you know, if he has issues, you know, that's up to the state to come in and say, your budget's, your fund balance is too high. That's not up to us.
Um, and I guess what you'll do is, you're gonna have him report on the money that he spent from the contribution from Weber County, and if there's anything left, you might consider that.
Yeah.
But we don't need to state that in the contract.
I don't think so.
But I don't know how you break that, I, I mean, it just goes into pot of money, then he, I guess you could break it down by percent.
He should be doing his quarterly financial statements, and he should be able to allocate projects that were, um, for Weber and Davis. I mean, I know it's a joint venture, but it shouldn't be completely co-mingled, like if, if he's spent money on going to conferences related to, um, uh, business activities in Weber County, he should be able to indicate that.
Well, but he doesn't, anything, he, all his efforts for both Davis and Weber, I mean, the conferences you go to can, actually, there's probably more benefit to us than Davis a lot of cases, but he just doesn't go to site selectors to say, come into Weber, he's, he's showing the entire area. His, his direction is to do Davis and Weber, it's not Davis or Weber, it's both.
So you're, you're comfortable, uh, we don't need to have any, like, coming back and report on, you know, separate activities, as long as it, he's reporting on what is on the approved SMP.
Yeah, I mean, he'll, he'll, he'll go to a conference, but again, you know, the only way you could say, look, I, he's been, so the conference, the state paid half, Davis paid a quarter, Weber paid a quarter, I mean, he could do that, but how do you, how do you go to a conference and say, I'm gonna spend five hours on Weber and three hours on Davis? It doesn't, that doesn't work.
What if the commission, sorry, I'm just trying to make, wrap my head around this, what if the commission specifically asked Chris to participate in a, um, marketing for a business that was coming in directly to Weber?
Well, that comes out of our budget, not his. So, you gotta separate, and we have our own economic, the stuff we do for Weber goes through Stephanie. You gotta get, get your head around, he's not Weber, he's not Davis, he's both. Anything he does is for both counties.
And his is more a general area.
His is. If we wanna do something for Weber, that goes through Stephanie, that's her budget.
Are the commissions going to be approving the same SMP? Um, for each one, are they gonna be separate ones?
Well, I'm assuming, no, I'm assuming it'll be the same.
I'd say the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to clarify that in?
I, I think it's, I think it sounds like, I think it reads that way.
Yeah, that's. He's not doing sep, Chris.
Yeah, because it says.
He's not doing separate work for Weber and separate work for Davis. Everything he does is the region. So you've gotta get out of your head that he's gonna be doing, that's Stephanie's job.
No, no.
Don't confuse him.
No, I agree with you. I'm just making sure the agreement states that.
Yeah.
I think it does, it says.
I think that's what it says.
And Davis Economic Development Department.
Tell me if it doesn't say that.
Anyways.
And I just, I'm just wanting to make sure that I read, uh, have the language exactly.
But you've gotta start, you've gotta stop thinking the stuff, we're gonna get Weber efforts and Davis Weaver, no, his job is both. Stephanie's job is Weaver, the Davis team is there. Does that make sense to you, or?
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
I, I guess I'm not seeing where you're.
Yeah.
No, I'm just making sure the language.
Okay, well, I think it says that, Weaver and Davis is quoted.
Okay.
Okay, okay, perfect. So then for termination, uh, ninety days, we can terminate this with written notice. And, uh, we also put in there to make sure that the, the assets that are owned by each entity will go back to the entities. And for, uh, compensation, I do have a question on part B. Um, and really, this is just up to you how you want this to work, but, um, if there are leftover funds, what do we want to have happen to those funds? Um, I think right now we have a right to go into a reserve account and that they can draw from for special projects. Is that okay with you? Would you rather?
I'm okay with that. I just don't wanna see that fund build up to an astronomical amount. I mean, i- if we're funding this every year, it should be being spent.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's what he's gonna do with his proposed budget, and that's why we're starting to draw it down. Uh, yeah, I mean, um, but we wanna have enough flexibility if all of a sudden the state money goes.
For sure.
But, yeah, I, I mean, I think.
If the state money went away, we'd wanna have enough maybe in reserve to face that, you know, so we don't get hit with it, but I just don't wanna see it billed. Whatever this needs to read so that it's not just building, 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 and, and not being spent to our benefit. We don't want that.
Yeah.
No, that's very true. I don't disagree.
I mean, if they're four oh and C three status, they have to show that they're doing something with that, or that's legal, that's illegal.
I mean, here, so.
Have to show that, if, if you guys just established that, he'll have to show that in his budget how they plan to, to utilize those funds.
So, so, you know, every year he has to go before a state committee that looks at his budget, looks at his fund balance. So, and again, he's, he's got that set of eyes that's pretty, through, uh, you know, led research analysis, he's getting, you know, he's justifying those expenses, and if they, you know, they'll also, because they'll meet in, uh, probably end of January, they'll come back and say, look, you know, you, you gotta drop that fund balance or spend it, so.
Okay.
I mean, that's being done right now by the state.
Okay. Um, section five, economic development incentives, uh, okay, so we added this section about agency, so, um, just ensuring that NUEA is not an agent of the counties and doesn't represent Davis or Weber respectively. Um, it, and then part B again, saying, NUEA is an independent entity for our respects and purposes, and their employees are not entitled to benefits from the counties. And then violation of that section, uh, would be a material breach of the agreement. Section six of administration, this seems almost, yes, the same, so, um, just want to ensure that there's one designated member from each county commission, um, that will meet, and this is jointly quarterly, if you're okay with that. Um, with an NUE staff person, just to talk about the agreement, so that would be a quarterly meeting that one of you would attend. And then the next section, section seven is all boilerplate, so I don't think we added anything to this. Close the, oh. Oh, yes, can you talk about this one a little bit?
So, section O of the miscellaneous, or se, uh, from section seven, um, that's called the non-funding clause, we use those in case, um, one of the commissions decides not to appropriate money uh, towards the venture, that it automatically relieves the obligation, uh, to, um, contract further. It just says if there's no money budgeted available, you have no agreement. Um, so we put those, they're, they're pretty standard in most of our contracts, just saying the legislative money has to appropriate money sufficient to actually do the contract.
So, yeah.
And I guess P and Q, we did, um, kind of clarify a little bit that you are able to request records pertaining to this agreement at any time. Um, and as far as work product goes, again, that anything created is the property of Davis and Weber and will go back to us respectively.
Is it, sorry, just one question on that, were Davis and Weber? Maybe I'm just thinking this throughout now, hold on.
Sure, no, that's fine.
Initially, I thought, would it be Davis or Weber, but I guess if really the work that's being done by NUEA is always collective and always region-based, and I agree with that. Okay, okay, I'm okay.
Oh, and one thing we also added, and this was Davis's suggestion, was the choice of forum clause. Um, that, where's that, um, part M, sorry, that that would be through the second judicial district court here.
Okay. Great. You have any questions?
No, no, I think it looks.
Thanks for your work on this, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate the work.
Ashlyn.
Now, if Davis was supposed to approve this, they.
But yes, so I made a few changes for them, I'll send it back to them with the changes we just talked about, and then as long as they're fine with it, I think it's good to go.
Okay, I think it's scheduled to be on the commission agenda tomorrow, but do you want to wait until we hear back from Davis officially?
I think a verbal is fine, if they're okay with those couple, because those aren't really consequential.
I can try and get ahold of her today.
Yeah, you just. I don't think they're gonna have too much concern with it.
So, it sounds like it's not on the commission agenda for tomorrow, so it'll be a week from tomorrow.
You might, you won't be here then.
I won't be here.
It's all right, we can do it without him.
You can do it.
I think, I think we'll have to.
Yeah, I think we'll have to.
We'll have to.
Great.
I'm okay with this.
All right, anything else?
And Jim hasn't seen it, so it'll take him a week to work on it.
For sure, yeah.
We'll put it on next week.
Okay, all right.
You know, I'll make changes and send it back.
Hey.
Yeah, Ashlyn, let's put it on for next week.
Bill, you wanna send me a final version, watch it, it'll change it.
Yeah.
Oh, put it on there, okay, perfect, great, thanks.
Thank you. Looks like some of you are staying, oh, everyone's staying, we're just adding Mr. Scott Park. No Commissioner Harvey out there, I take it?
I did not see Commissioner Harvey out there, just Todd Ferrario.
Todd Ferrario. Oh, he's really early.
He said he just finished his meeting, his previous meeting, a little early.
He's kind of just hanging out. Okay, then we'll move on to item three, a discussion regarding our CRA policies, Stephanie Russell, Ashlyn Tuckett, Chris Crockett, Lauren Thomas, and Scott Parks. Oh, here, you take this one?
Yes, absolutely. Did you guys have a chance to take a peek at that? Um, we, I sent it to you, um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
I didn't see it.
I've looked at it, but I think I forgot.
Kinda go over it, um, uh, briefly with you, will we send it, um, and then give you guys a chance to really take a look at it before we put it on the agenda for a vote? Uh, we've been working on this for a really long time, and I think we finally.
I heard about this when it came into us.
I know, I, I think we've finally all come to an agreement, um, we're gonna have one more discussion about it, uh, at our, at our meeting tomorrow, but we just wanted to get a little bit input from you. So basically, we've taken the idea of, um, participating in a CRA, so that would be when the cities approach us, how we participate, as well as creating our own CRAs. Um, and so we've kept it, we, we originally had those two policies separated, but we thought that'd be confusing, so we've combined them together into one, uh, to make it really easy for the commission, uh, when we bring these either or to your attention. So really, the intent is to, to be able to make better evaluations on each project as they come into us. Um, and for you guys to really look at what that project is gonna be contributing to the overall economic environment of the county and the overall economic environment of the city, as we're doing a participation one, as it relates to, to that. So we've broken the policy down into the intent, um, really, uh, how it goes, how it passes through the Economic Development Finance Committee, so that process um, as it relates to the state statute, how it's governed by the state statute, so we've incorporated all of that. And then, and in section three of the policy, it says procedure for petitioning a county participation in a CRA. So that would be like Riverdale, Roy, any of them coming to us and asking for us to participate. So we've, uh, created a form for that, so they have to fill out the form. And then, then it goes before the Economic Development Finance Committee for evaluation, so we're gonna prescreen it for you to make sure it's in line with the policy before we schedule meetings, before we have public meetings and bring everybody in. We're gonna make sure it, it's something that you guys would be amenable to. Um, and then we'll do an, an initial review with our, uh, and then we will, uh, look at doing a potential interlocal agreement. So there'll be a point once it goes to that Economic Development Finance Committee, it will come to you guys for that final, yeah, we like this, we like the terms and conditions, we like what the project has to offer the county and the city, um, we'd like to move forward, or we'd have you guys say, no, we'd actually like to lower that rate or maybe even bump the rate. So it gives you guys the flexibility to look at that.
Can I ask a question? So does it have a standard rate in term?
Yes. So the standard one is fifty percent at fifteen years, and that matches the school and the fire district's policies. And that's what we wanted to make sure we were consistent with.
Any others, um, that it matches with?
Those are the only ones that we use when we create them. We don't use any of the other taxing entities. Um, we, we only do the school and the fire district. So if Ogden City wanted to create one, they're, they're gonna probably go to more than that. They usually go to Central Weaver, Weaver Basin, but we don't generally do that when we create our own. We keep it to those, just the three entities. Um, so it says the committee will not recommend county tax increment finance that exceeds fifty percent for fifteen years unless the committee finds that the proposed project will create a significant county public infrastructure benefit. So it's got to have some kind of a public infrastructure bene- benefit. We did talk about maybe putting some language in there that says county, um, uh, public infrastructure or, and or economic benefit. Would you guys want that flexibility to be able to leverage some economic benefit as well as public infrastructure? This is just for participating with other cities. That's a choice, you guys.
Is it in there now?
It, it's not in there currently, um, but we could add that in, and it still gives you a little bit of flexibility.
Considering it, but I don't want there to be any expectation. Either with the requestor or with the committee.
So if that were the case, I would say leave it out, because this is a recommendation we make to you. You guys can always choose to do whatever you want with the commissioners. So if we put it out there and advertise it, hey, not just infrastructure, but any economic benefit, well, yeah, this generates a lot of new jobs that the state's gonna collect a lot of tax increment from. I would say, don't say that. If you wanna do that, you can consider it. Because you're not bound to the recommendations of this group, but we won't recommend it to you unless it has a public infrastructure.
And we're not bound to the, to the standard that's being set, set out by the policy?
No, so this committee makes a recommendation to the commissioners.
Policy is what feeds the committee.
Yes, but you don't have to follow the recommendations of the committee. You can say, thanks for your recommendation committee, but for whatever reason, I, we choose to invest in this because it's a good partnership with so-and-so and has economic benefit. But that, does that make sense? So you can still do it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if they, if they've got an economic benefit and they, I, we've got the guardrails in place with the fifty seventy-five, which I think is the key, key part. And if they say, well, look, we got this infrastructure, but we think that you should look a little higher, maybe raise it to seventy or seventy-five because the economic, they can come to us and then plead their case. Yeah, but we're not making a guarantee.
Nor are we advertising that that's an option.
Yeah, we, we wanna kinda.
Which, which means that Ogden City's request will go down.
And Riverdells. But it still allows you to go beyond the policy because it's just, it's just a recommendation. And I like the word guardrails. It's a guardrail. Um, and so the same thing would, would kind of go with if someone came to us, like Snow Basin or Promontory wanted to create one in the incorporated area, we'd look at, we'd start with that fifty at fifty fifteen. And we'd go with that. And it was the same thing. You guys would have the flexibility to move it in and out of the guardrails, so narrow it in or make it broader. Um, we did add a little bit more of the process as it relates to creating one, just so that it's actually in the policy. Um, so we have that codified as this is the process you, you, you as a developer need to go through to create this. So that's, we just fine-tune the process really well. And once again, it'll keep you guys from having a whole bunch of meetings without having the due diligence done first. And that's really the, the whole point of this, is to make sure that developer knows you gotta come through staff, you gotta go through the process, you have to pay your registration fees, you have to do your application, and, and then.
And there's an expectation, right? We're setting an expectation, so they're not just coming in and asking.
And asking for the world, and then putting you guys in a position, in a public meeting, where we have to have that discussion in a public meeting. So this, I think it creates a streamlined process, sets an expectation, then they come before you to pitch their case if they and, and you'll go, and we'll bring our recommendation. If our recommendation, we'll let them come pitch their case for seventy-five, but we might be recommending twenty-five, so. And that's for you guys to weigh out and decide.
Yeah, what, and what it does, it creates, again, uh, that they're not, don't have unreal expectations, come in and said, well, you did this for Ogden. You gave them, gave them a ninety percent thirty-year, why don't you do this? So we just say, you know.
This is our policy, this is moving forward, we're, this is how we do business. That's, that's pretty much in, pretty much in a nutshell. Um, I can resend this to you guys after our meeting tomorrow. Um, if, if you want, we can get this on the agenda, um, for the next couple of weeks, or if you wanna wait till Gage gets back, it's up to you guys.
I'm good with it, I mean, it's, I wish we would've had this a couple of years ago. No, this is good.
Specifically with the haircut years.
This is good.
But moving forward, you know.
I don't think that, we need, we need to delay it, do we?
I don't see a reason to.
We're just gonna tidy up the language in it then. We'll send you guys a final, a final draft. And then, um, well, we're gonna have a little discussion about it tomorrow.
Yeah, that's a good policy, and again, we can. In and out, you know.
Yeah, it leaves, you guys, it leaves the final say with you guys, but it, it sets an expectation upfront, so they're not coming in asking for crazy stuff.
And, and it does require that we give you a written recommendation, so there's at least some history there, that it's not just.
Yeah, I love that. Yeah. And I do agendas for all those meetings, so we always keep agendas. We don't do minutes for the meetings, but we keep agendas. And then, um, we'll do a written recommendation, so there's a, there's a paper trail.
Thank you so much.
We'll tie it up and get that on next week's agenda, Ashlyn.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Great work, guys.
Took longer than expected.
Just makes everything easier.
It really does.
Jimmy, see you, Sean then.
Uh, yep, Sean and Bill.
More paper for you.
I just got, I just got.
I thought you left the room. Okay, we'll move on to item four, discussion regarding EV charging site agreement, terms and conditions. Sean Wilkinson, Stephanie Russell, Bill Ross, and Ashlyn Tuckett. Sean.
All right, so, missionaries, a few, how long has it been? It's been
It's been a little bit.
Several weeks ago. Uh, we had the presentation from Brandy Grace, and I forgot her name. But they came, they were proposing that they would install EV charging stations around the county, and we would get a portion of that revenue from people that use, uh, the EV charging station. So they send us a proposed contract, but in that contract, there were some things that we, we just wanted to bring up to you. Because it looks like the county will be on the hook to provide the power uh, to these sites, and, and will be charged for that. So that kind of comes off the top of our reimbursement, if I'm reading this correct. So that, that wasn't, at least that I recall, I don't know that that was mentioned in the initial presentation. But we wanted to discuss that, see what your interest level is, and, and see if we should just go back and negotiate out of that, or, or how this works, but, and Stephanie, you may know more.
This is solar, right?
Well, they, they will put solar panels on it to help to subsidize the power.
But there will still be.
But there will still be, they will still be hooked up to the grid.
These are the high voltage ones that will charge it in like quarter of the time.
So we're paying for the power?
We produce us the, the location, they'll come and put all the stuff in, but we have to maintain the, the, so say if we did want it, the, like, the, the horseshoe pond, by the bathrooms there, we would provide, they would, we would just say, you got this land, they'd come and put the parking things in, put the, install all of it, but then we'd have to just make sure, maintain the, the parking area and.
Well, we, we have to pay for the power.
And pay for the power. And pay for the power. I thought, didn't she say ten percent?
So it says leaseholders agree to pay eight cents per kilowatt for power produced by solar panels at site within scope. Solar cost shall offset compensation. Any remaining power cost shall be borne by the leaseholder and paid to its power provider. So not knowing what these things are gonna actually cost, I think this is risky.
We, I, who knows? I don't know how much that power costs. But I, I'd like that information before we enter into a contract.
I don't imagine that Chris Crockett would recommend we sign this right now as.
There's lots of things wrong with this contract, and, uh, it doesn't contain a lot of standard terms and provisions that you would see in contracts. I don't even know, do we have a sites identified of where we?
We do. We actually do have sites identified.
Gave them like five and all, maybe two.
So, I mean, you can enter into it, there's really no issue with that, but we would want to expand the insurance, the indemnification provisions. Uh, we'd wanna put in our standard county, um, provisions. It's just, it's very, very bare bones for what they're doing. I'd probably take a look at the Q Energy contract, just because that's similar into using terms that are like that, for a contract like this, but I wouldn't sign it in this form.
So, would you like us to maybe get with them and say we were interested in participating, but we needed totally a different contract and provide a contract?
And we need to know some kind of ballpark of what that.
And I'm guessing the power cost is based on how many people use. And that they may say, well, if more people use it, even though your power cost is higher, you get more of a reimbursement, so it just offsets itself. But are, are we doing this just to call it good, because we wanna be good stewards of the environment, or are we doing this to make money, or I guess that's, that's where, I don't know, that's not my call. So.
Chris, I have a question too, and I think I asked it when they initially came in, and I don't remember the answer you gave me, if I did ask. Do we have to go through procurement for this?
No, this is one that I confirmed with Jason, and I can go back and find my text messages. It was using our site to allow a company to come in, um, it's similar to the Q Energy one. Um, where we wouldn't really have to procure out where, how, what we wanna do with our land. But, yeah, no.
If, if it, I guess it costs us money
Money.
To put the power in, does that?
And that's one thing, I guess I would have to look at that too, because what I was, uh, thinking before is that it wouldn't cost us.
I, I agree. I was under the impression that this was.
Until you brought that up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I guess what we'd wanna know first, is this something even the commission wants to entertain?
And they're kind of vague, and this last episode says, well, since basically the proceeds would, they call it rand. So be determined in separate lease agreement after construction costs, so we don't even know what. But I think she was saying ten percent was of the bill, but which, I don't, I don't think ten percent pays for it. It might barely pay for the.
Yeah, I, we need more information on what it's gonna cost us.
We need to know, like, if it, how we terminate. Who owns the equipment, who's going to, how long we'd have them, yeah, it's just, it's premature.
What do you think, Gage?
I, yeah, this is a little too vague for me.
That's kind of where we were at on it, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to get the cost tied down. What's it gonna cost us? You know, is it ten percent, right? Maybe, you know. And I don't mind being a good public su- you know.
Break even. But I don't know if we wanna lose money.
But I don't wanna subsidize it.
It's a private company, too.
Yeah, I don't, I think, and I agree with Chris, this is a little too vague a contract.
Let me respond, uh, to Brandy and Aaron and just say, this is kind of where we're at. We would need a, a lot more additional information, and Chris, maybe I'll just get with you really quick and make a list of the additional information that we would need before we'd be able to, and even consider, consider entering into a contract.
Brandy's connection to this group?
It's, it's outside of UAC.
So is it her own personal?
I think so.
Personal company?
It's not her company, but it's.
I thought it was.
Was it? I don't know.
No, it's not her, her company, she's working for them.
She's, yeah, I think she's an employee.
Yeah, she's outside of UAC, though.
She made that clear when she came in. This has nothing to do with UAC.
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Did they give, or was it just to test the waters, or did they give like a formal presentation? And like show, like, here's some examples of where we've done this before, um, in other counties, or were we the very first?
They haven't set up anywhere else. They're just, they're getting, they're trying to find out locations and.
Across the state, this isn't just our county, and so that's what they're doing, is they're going to all the counties. They're trying to have places for the federal and Utah go, uh, state government, that they would have places to charge if they were to travel throughout the state. So this company, that's why they're kind of trying to push it, but.
It's kind of, it is similar to the, to the methane harvesting. It's a, it's a pilot, it's a pilot type of a program. Uh, my guess is Voltus got a bunch of federal dollars from somewhere, and they're trying to create these partnerships that, that, we, we've been hit up for other types of partnerships like this with EV stations from different companies. This isn't the first one, we've been hit up. It's just, this was the first one that came with us, to us with some, some form of a structure. The other ones are just kind of theoretical. A lot of these companies have gotten, uh, federal subsidies to set up EV stations. And they're still trying to figure out how to do it. So I would say, maybe you and I have a chat. Um, and we put a list of criteria together that we would need before we bring it back to, to the commission.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then we'll, we'll just get back with you on that, if they're able to build that criteria.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Well, we're out on time. Good job.
Look at us.
Maybe there's a common denominator.
And I get in trouble.
I thought Sarah was still out of town. Is she back?
Uh, she must be, because I thought she was in Europe. She told me last week she was in Europe. Yeah, maybe she's not.
There's Mr. Todd.
You guys go over to see TCG, yeah?
I'll, I'm gonna go.
We're up on stage.
Oh, that's right. It was, I was checking people in six AM.
Six AM, really?
Well, we set up, we put about seven hundred and fifty-three checking this morning.
Wow.
But it went pretty well.
Wow. Are you having a good time over there?
Yeah, it's off to a good start.
Should we get turned on this year?
Booths are full. We have forty people on waiting list for. But it's always hard when you have a facility, because you can't explode a facility for a single event. You know, it just doesn't make fiscal sense, because you can't, we have a lot of them, or that big, but I think this tinker in the prime that's looking at coming will be a really good.
Will it be similar in size to this, or smaller?
It's smaller with a lot of potential. I think at some point, we should get to about three quarters of the size, if not a little bigger. Think it'll come in about half the size. Yeah, and it's really interesting, this conference, if you look at the private things that these companies are doing peripherally, I'm renting out more, I mean, they're spending a ton of dollars outside of just that singular space.
How long are they actually in town, Sunday through?
Wednesday night, are you guys coming to the party? The people will stay Thursday for some private meetings.
Where's the party this year?
Yeah, it's kind of a beach theme.
Get your flip flops on.
Flip flop, okay, we'll all be gone, so.
What, when are you leaving? Wednesday?
Wednesday afternoon, yeah.
Somewhere fun or meetings?
Oh, yeah, fun.
Uh, yeah, fun. Well, fun once I get there.
Twenty-three hours then fun?
Is it twenty-three hours? Is it twenty-three hours?
Yeah.
It's a bad, yeah.
I know, depends on how you go, I, I did it in nineteen.
That doesn't make me feel a lot better.
Did you go through Hong Kong?
Uh-uh, we went through Hawaii.
Went to Valley?
Uh, Hawaii?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went through Hawaii, so it ended up being nineteen.
I don't.
Are you going to?
We go straight out of LA.
Oh, you are, yeah, I flew out of San Francisco, that's why.
Oh.
Yeah, no, you, you'll, yeah, you're gonna be on the plane for a long time.
It's all right, you'll enjoy it.
I remember laying on the floor, like down by my dad's feet, because I just can't sit in that chair any longer.
Huh.
I was.
Benadryl becomes your friend.
I was seventeen.
When your kids are young.
Yeah. Benadryl and some vodka. That'll set you right.
Together, there you go.
Oh, yeah. That'll be a real enjoy, that's how my, uh, my, my boyfriend's mother, she lives in San Francisco, and her, her boyfriend is from Australia.
Oh, right.
Every, every three months they go back and forth between Sydney and San Francisco. And she just liquors herself up. Sleeps this flight.
Wow.
Yeah, they do it every three months, it's, it's pretty rough.
That's a long time, yeah, two, three months. We waiting on uh?
We waiting on Sarah?
We're not waiting on Todd.
No.
Are they coming? You know?
I've been texted, so.
Oh, you have been?
Want me to give you a thirty thousand foot overview, I don't have the pretty piece paper for you.
Are you in charge of this, what you?
Sarah wrote it up, but yeah, I'm the chairperson.
Back from Europe?
Yeah, she flew in yesterday, so basically it's T-TAB. We're asking you basically to hold it the same as we have before, same increase. Uh, we get a ten percent kick on the thirty thousand dollars, and we're at thirty-two right now.
There's Jim. There he is, I know, we're at thirty now, which is?
Thirty-two right now, and it gets a little kicker every year, and this is for us to start um new. Expos events in Ogden, it gets split up usually. We get points if it's in one of our venues, so it's bringing events to our venues. Um, and it can split up usually five or six different events throughout the year. Um, to kind of establish them, and the whole goal is to find one that we think will be sustainable by year two or year three. That just continue to come back to the county, think historically, if you look, probably somewhere eleven or twelve, our. Kind of iconic events started with some T-TAB funding, which is pretty good record, so.
Didn't we just, didn't we raise them last year, when we got to thirty-two?
Well, it's the same, we get a little bump every year, we didn't out for more, but.
All right.
Um, there's, there's no change, Jim had asked, sorry, Commissioner Harvey, had us to, asked us to. Work with Sarah, cause so she will be presenting her budget right before ours, because we talked about percentages and where they went, so. We sat with her and kind of went through, look.
You remember how last year it was almost kind of a, well, there was a little bit of friction between the Convention Visitors Bureau and the. And the culture, this, the CPR Culture Parks and Recreation, so I got those two together. And now they're gonna be, they're gonna be hand in hand, so we don't have that again, just so you know, so in case you were asking, I was asking, yeah, thank you.
So we did that, and I will say, meeting went better than I thought it would. You know, it's, it's adversarial to start with, we're looking at the same pot of money, but I think we have a pretty good plan to work down.
Oh, I hear.
I hear Tim. Mr. Sharp.
I have a grasshopper in my hair. I rub my scooter down.
Oh, awesome.
Hi, Jim. How are you?
Yeah, fine, nice to see you. How are you?
Got hit by a grasshopper on my scooter.
Do you have safety glasses?
Yeah, well, I should, for the night.
She works around the neighborhood.
I, I, I ride my own, but I, for the nighttime, you can't wear sunglasses, I just got some safety.
I do have some, all the safety glasses, they're not really goggles.
Once in a while, click, 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 click.
Hi.
Jessica, that worked out really good, thanks, and babe.
So Sarah's gonna type it up, so we just have to explain what we're doing.
Okay.
So again, at thirty thousand foot, they would love to hear your input. I just said that we were looking to keep the grant funding with the growth, the similar as we'd have it. And that Sarah and Marty and I had met, looking at the percentages for Visit Ogden, and that's where we're gonna come. With kind of a work new proposal of how to work that out.
Yeah, I think, I think the continued ask, as you know, is a consistent. Model percentage, rather than, I mean, you guys have to deal with all the big budgets and make it all work, and we understand that, but. You know, based on the, looking at other models and also knowing the challenge it is for her to, you know, I serve on the. Utopia Tourism, I'm the Chair of the Utopia Tourism Board, so she gets that big grant from us, you know, which. You know, I'm glad that she's not here, so I can say, and I think you know this, but to her credit. I mean, she has scratched and clawed and fought for Weaver County, you know, I mean, we're, we're a smaller fish in the big pond up there. And she is highly respected, in fact, I'm glad she didn't get snagged, I'm glad the governor didn't snag her for. Vicky Correll's job, because that probably would have been a tough call for her to make, but she's just so passionate about this, so. Sarah aside, it's hard for them to come up with their whole marketing plan, their whole strategic vision, their whole everything. Based on, am I gonna get this money or not, you know, I mean, they're, she's gonna get funding for sure. But the hope is that if they do well, and then if they don't do well, then their percentage grows, you know, goes down, if TRT goes down, or if our. You know, our dollars.
Percentage would hold their dollars would go down.
Yeah, right, and that's fair, you know, was that about?
Yeah, that's a hundred percent.
But we also know that. There's just not enough to make this for everyone, for what he does, I mean, obviously I'm sitting next to a rock star, as you know, that does so much with. Little, and always has, you know, you can't help but make things better.
No, and I think there's some staffing changes at Visit Ogden that are gonna be beneficial for us. Um, we had the directors do a sit down with Sarah independently and talk about what's working, what's not working. Um, obviously, the conference center is a big sell moving forward, it's beautiful. And so there's some holes to fill there, and I think Marty and I's plan with some of our CIP is to turn those guns towards Golden Spike a little bit. Just to update some things, so they can get some different type of customers in the door. Um, which I think will be fairly easy for us to do. And I think that really we'll lean right back on Visit Ogden to help fill some of those pieces, we do have some of our. Traveling money this year that's gearing some of our mid-level managers to go to some of these connects with them. Um, I think sometimes we expect them to go to these conferences and explain exactly what we need, that's pretty hard to do. Because time of year, venues available, what fits, so we have some dollars to send them with them, so we can capture some business that we can hold on to. Uh, so that's, that's the goal for us this year is to actually, we've always asked for assistance, I'm not always sure we've been the best at assisting back. So I think with what we're gonna bring to you in budgets, I think will speak for itself.
Just looking forward to it, I know you've also been dealt another card with the Sheriff's Office not being able to staff the.
Yeah.
Community services, positions at a number of facilities, not just the Golden Spike, but the Gun Range, and then. Now, every place that the animal, every place that's needed. And how that we fill those and make sure that the places are taken care of still, because. Of course, it's still crap and.
Yeah.
Don't I know?
And we, you'll, you'll see those, you'll see those reflected on the budget with a couple of options for you guys, just to look at. We're hoping that's a little bit short term, you know, they're trying to get some people to the academy and get that program started, but in the short term, we need to cover our facilities. Um, the Gun Range probably as a single facility got hit the hardest, because we went from every single day to two days to.
We went to a hundred and twenty hours a week of service to nothing.
To nothing. Um, so we're gonna show some ways to backfill that.
He sees lines on his post.
That's Ice Sheet, they're new lines. Um, but we're backfilling a little bit with Parks and Rec right now, we're kind of in the slowdown with Parks and Rec, so we've got them covered pretty well till the end of the year, but you guys will see a proposal and. The way we're proposing, if it comes back, we can easily fold those employees back to Parks and Rec where we're taking them from, some part timers, so. I think it's a pretty good story on our side, it's a, it's a medium term fix. It's not a two-week fix, but it's probably not a five-year fix, you know, hopefully we get the prob, the program back on its feet. Because I think you see big impacts at certain places, but we're talking small impacts all over our county with those groups. So, I mean, that's, that's a bigger issue that we have to solve, but I think we're pretty good at taking care of our own, at least in the short term, but. We put some options.
What I admire is it seems like the legs of the stool are just all working together. The best they can, Todd, Marty, Sarah, Gold, you know, I mean, all of our resources are just. Trying to support each other, help each other, our events, everything else, you know?
I think you guys will be really happy, we've made an offer and it was accepted for a director at the Ice Sheet.
Wonderful.
And excellent, he's got a really good reputation in the state for ice sports and running rings.
That happened Friday?
Happened Friday, um, he comes out of the Oval, um, and he's been in the business for twenty years. Um, and what was really interesting when that job opened, I probably got fifteen phone calls from people in the ice business. In our state and surrounding states, asking me about it, saying, hey, you should talk to this person, or I told him to call, so we actually had some. My, my concern, you can find a facility guy, but ice is pretty specific, and we had three or four guys on there that actually had some decent ice experience. Um, so he'll jump in, and I think he can make a nice change right off the get-go, which will get that place going. He'll say how he likes his budget, I did it, so. You can complain to me, but.
I remember Steve Fishburne tried to sell me gourmet ice once.
Yeah.
And that's a name from the past.
Yeah. Gourmet ice, Fishburne.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, so we will be giving you a letter, this is just our first notice, just asking you to kind of hold the as-is with our grant program. And then at budget times, which will be the end of the month, we'll kind of show you how we think the relationship works the best for us and. And what that looks like for the future, and, and there's some work to be done on both sides, you know, we're gonna, we sat with Sarah and we're, our. Division Directors are meeting with Millie and saying, here, here's what I really need, you know, there's always conversations, but I said, you need action items. And to report back on action items, because having conversations about the what-ifs is not getting us anywhere. So I think there'll be a decent change, and Sarah said her team's on board, and. And so we'll bring you something a little more cohesive, and hopefully it feels that way, so.
Wonderful, I may have missed it, but is she on her way, Sarah?
No, she's in Europe, I thought she, she was coming back first day.
I think.
She must have held off.
I think she's traveling right now, today, she just did Mont Blanc with Lisa Harrison and Kim Graff, they did a hundred and ten miles and. Right, you know, hike to hike to hike and rain, snow, she'll.
Did she get a pen out of it?
I don't know, I've got a couple of pictures, they're having fun, but they, you know, one of them snores, Sarah's the lightest sleeper as I know. Like you sleep, way too light for me.
So what is uh? Do you have any questions on this? I don't think Gage did either.
No, and we talked a little before, and is there anything you guys want us to address just on the collaborative piece, you're gonna see the budget piece. And we're gonna be here with Sarah when she presents this time, because she's coming in line with us instead of a separate.
I can't tell you how happy that makes me.
No, you can, you can tell me.
Well, I credit you, I credit you for being an integral piece to that and getting that to work together, because as hard as I tried to.
Well, I'm the only one that calls her.
Saying, you got it. It doesn't matter what. You've done it, that's great, Kim, thanks for caring continually.
Mm hmm.
Got our little area.
Yeah.
Anything, anything else that you've got for us?
No.
A lot of yours.
A lot of yours, yeah, a lot of yours are caring.
Anything else that you'd like to report on, or you can tell us?
Um, if you see Brewster's sign coming down on social media, we are not closing. After thirty years, that sign is being taken down and getting a twenty thousand dollar refurbish, so.
Facelift.
Yeah, facelift, so we're letting it play out, and then we'll say, um, no, we're not closing.
Your restaurant is one of the reasons I moved here.
Ah.
B Street, or which one, Coops, or now Roosters, Union Station?
My sister, I came up here, I came up here hiking, she lives in Cotwood Heights, and we, and we had a great hike, and then we came down to. She wanted to eat at your restaurant, because she likes your beer. And I saw the whole downtown, I was like, okay, and she looked at me, and she's like, you could live here, couldn't you, and I said, yeah, okay.
Wow, that's a good story.
It's the reason I fly, I fly for the dog here.
Wow, okay, I plan for her, because I know she's a rock star, so.
One, a good story about Kim is when we have new events, and this has happened more than once, I'll call her cell phone and go, okay. I need a vendor, I need you to come, you might not make any money, but I will include you in the good ones. Let's see how this works, and you know, whether it's a nut or some new things that we bring. It's important to have these kind of iconic places come forward and step up, and they've done it many times.
Well.
We've had some successes and some failures.
Well, it's really fun at this time of our life, because, you know, I'm kind of transitioning, I have a new young female CEO in Kim Bowsher, and. Um, you know, we, we have the Mercantile, we did that collaboration with Cafe Mercantile and us and Beehive Cheese, and then we're, we have our hospitality group now. Out of the back, so we're office-ing out of the back of the Bus Depot, and. It's just a really fun time to do what we want to do, you know, I mean, we have made a very clear decision that we're gonna be a legacy group, and we're not. You know, Pete and I don't need to own it forever or anything, but what we do is different, and we can do stuff like that, you know, I mean, given bandwidth and challenges and all of that.
Helps us a bunch.
But I get to play restaurant now, I get to like clear a dish, say, I don't know how to make coffee, or. Do anything, go back, work a little, come back, it's all switched over with cute young people working, or older ladies having fun.
Yeah.
I'm living my best life.
She's good at driving the scooter and tomatoes, drive on.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Well, we appreciate your time, we just wanted to give you a heads up on kind of where we came with this all. Um.
And I'm glad we caught you, I'm glad we landed you, Stephanie.
And we know that the grants and pieces always ask, and we do appreciate the.
But it does good work, we've been able to use that to bring some groups, and it's awesome, so.
Absolutely, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Women.
I'm Ashlyn.
I'm Stephanie's new assistant.
Oh, hello.
Okay.
I'm Jessica, I'm the Public Relations Manager.
Excellent.
And then the hammer down there.
Oh, I know. The hammer keeps us safe, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go scooting.
We should, we should.
God, that could be dangerous.
Actually sounds really fun.
Thanks, guys.
Want to saunter?
Motion to saunter?
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Aye.
Commissioner Bolosai, Commissioner Harvey, I will saunter until two thirty time, sir. Six. Item number six. Discussion regarding the Western Weaver General Plan amending the master plan, large mixed use development near the Weaver River. Charlie Ewer. Sean. Is excused right now. Rick Grover, Bren Edwards, Andrew Faverro, Jeff Beck, Geneva Blanchard. And Wayne Andriotti. Charlie, did I talk about you?
I made sure you were the first. I was the first one to say.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie. Go ahead.
We've got, I think you guys are somewhat aware of this project. We've got applicants in the room, uh, Geneva and Jeff here. Um, looking to uh, pick up some property and develop it into a master plan community. Um, we went out while uh, the USIP conference was going on out in Tennessee and we visited Northern Commons. And that is the style development that these guys are um, entertaining for this particular area. You can see from the map that's in front of you behind the write up. Um, uh, which area out west it is that we're looking at. And it's really a lot of property that's just right there on the east side of the Weaver River. Between forty seven hundred west and the Weaver River and between twelfth street and almost plenty city. So big, big chunk of property there. They want a master planet, which is an ideal way to plan a large swath of land. Um, I know we, we've got a general plan that suggests that if uh, things are master planned, we should try and help facilitate that. As much as possible. Um, right now, if you flip the pages over to the back, second to last page. You'll see what your current general plan.
Of the big one, Charlie? There are a lot of pages here. Which, which page?
Second to last of the big.
Okay, got it. I got it.
That's why, that's the, the red outline is the, the approximate boundary of the property. Um, and you'll, you'll see behind that boundary, you've got uh, current, the current general plan calls for agricultural area. And so you'll see uh, uh, this is a pretty big change.
What about this little piece right here that's kind of outside of by the river, but it's got a little Z going through. You cannot get to build a. It's right there, Charlie.
It'd be a Z street. Yeah, I can see it.
What is that little? How come that's been left out?
It's, it's just a parcel.
That they don't own?
Parcel line that, yeah, hasn't been acquired yet.
But it could possibly be. If it were acquired, it could possibly be included. Thank you.
And that's actually really good thought. If you turn the next page over. You could see how their proposal fits. With the existing general plan. And you can see the out parcels that aren't part of their proposal. Um, I think ultimately, um, with whatever. Uh, recommendation comes through the planning commission will also be recommending that we look at those other out uh, properties as well. And see if there's a way that we can help them um, uh, transition into this property a little bit better. Uh, than just leaving them as add parcels. I mean, maybe they're, maybe they'll be good as add parcels too. This has been before the planning commission in a work session. It's scheduled for next Tuesday for a public hearing. A public hearing for the uh, map amendment and. We wanted to chat with you guys first to, to warm you up to the idea, um. But also to take some direction from you guys. Um, I, the planning commission asks for uh, a work session. With you guys, uh, one, uh, they want to invite you to one of their meetings so that they can have a little bit more time with you and. Discuss the possibilities of this project or the uh, the pros and cons and really kind of get your takes so that everyone's on the same page. Um, but I wanted to make sure the developer was here as well so that they can kind of give you their, their hopes and dreams and you guys can give us some, some guidance and feedback. Any questions for us on this?
Questions? Well, Charlie, give me the. Which version of what would need to change? From our current plan. To make this happen.
Just the map, just the very last map is what would need to change.
All right, I can.
So.
That's why you did it.
So if we just look at it from this perspective here, a little bit easier to see the crisp edges. Um, so the. What I've got right there. That circle right there, that's the end of four hundred south out there on forty seven hundred west. So they would pick up four hundred south and that red is mixed use commercial. And it would follow. A new alignment that kind of curves down into. Fifty one hundred west, so fifty one hundred west has a railroad crossing right now, so you can kind of see how that road can curve from four hundred down into fifty one hundred west. Um, and then on both sides of that road, you'd see mixed use commercial development. The darker orange that's around it, Mr. Harvey, let me see if I can get you.
You're okay.
Circle here. There you go, there you go. Uh, that's mixed residential, so you can have any, anywhere from single family to multifamily. According to our general plan uh, in that area, uh, so you could get some stacked flats or some multifamily attached in there. And then outside of that area, uh, in the lighter yellows and greens, you've got larger lots. So you got medium to large sized lots and you've got. Large uh, rural residential lots.
What is a large lot, Charlie?
Uh, our general plan calls a rural residential lot, anything that's an acre or greater. Um, a medium to large lot would be fifteen thousand square feet or greater. And then the smaller lots would be under that. Fifteen thousand square feet or so. So, and our general.
Eight thousand, six thousand square foot lot?
Those, those would be, those would be somewhere between small and medium, yeah. Eight, uh, five to eight would probably be uh. Uh, smallish uh, to medium size and then anything under five thousand would be small.
So. Single family detached or attached?
Um, if it is small, um, residential, you can have um, attached or detached. The planning commission is also working on a code amendment, not for this project, for another project, but it will affect our multifamily areas. Where they are looking at um, creating a new type of zone that allows multifamily attached. Or excuse me, single family attached, so townhomes. Or single family stacked and it calls them out and treats them just a little bit differently. So, and stacked.
Be condos.
Condos, if apartments or condos. See what that is. So how many acres do you have here?
In this, it's about four thirty.
Uh, so we're talking about four hundred and thirty acres with a, a wide variety of, of village. So we're talking about four hundred and thirty acres with a wide variety of village-type development in it. One thing that they are doing out in the Norton Commons, the analogous community that we went and looked at is the developer maintains control over development through the life of the project. What that allows the developer to do is write their real estate contracts so that land use, architectural design, all that is pre-selected at the point that they're selling little lots to people. And so if the developer doesn't, if the developer wants a mixed-use commercial area along this street, the developer has a lot of latitude through those sales contracts to say, I'm gonna sell this to you, but it's gotta be X, Y, and Z. It's gotta look X, Y, and Z. It's gotta form X, Y, and Z. And so, a large project like this, rather than seeing the nitty-gritty details in the development agreement that the county would have to administer, our development agreement would probably be a little bit more along the lines of helping refine what the operational standards of that master developer will be. Giving the master developer a lot more discretion to operate inside of that area, but still having some tie, some commitment to the county on the general appearance feel, look, functionality of the community. Another benefit of bigger master plan projects where the developer is fully invested on making sure that they're with it through the, through the final build-out.
Questions, Commissioner Fror. So I'm assuming the model of this is Norton Commons.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's where you're still headed.
Yep.
So. We saw Norton Commons. I'm a, I'm very impressed with the, what they've done there, which was let the developer kind of take their own destiny within certain guardrails, which I think makes sense because they're the ones putting their money up and the market can change from year to year, so. I, I'm not opposed to the concept if it follows that model. Obviously, the question is, is how do we deal with infrastructure? How do we get water and sewer to this and serve this? I, I actually think that it makes sense to I'm gonna say consolidate some of that growth out in Western Weaver County at one location. Because then you can dedicate the money for infrastructure to that site, rather than have twelve or twenty different ten or fifteen acre sites around the county, that now everybody's concerned about infrastructure. You know, not that we're gonna take private property rights away, I think this this in my mind satisfies a lot of the requirements, potential requirements for infrastructure. So that's my first. If, if you can show me how you've got infrastructure there, what's it gonna be for the future, water, sewer, all the goodies that go with it. I'm happy to look at it, yeah.
And we can definitely do that. We've, we've done a lot of due diligence leading up to this, so we can answer a lot of that and have that prepared for you.
On the week of the thirtieth, I guess you're putting together a design charrette. They're bringing their architect out, same architect from Norton Commons out with the design team to help kind of lay out the property.
When is that again?
That'll be September thirtieth, week of September thirty.
Yeah, and we, we spoke with them today and they would love to have the commissioners be part of that, if you guys have time. We could set aside some slots where you come in and give feedback and see if that designs.
I'd like to get out, I, I would like to. I'd like to be able to see this, this thing. Have you seen it, any of you online? Online? Where do you see this online? NortonCommons.com or?
Yeah.
We can send you the link.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. I can send you the link. I can send you over some fact sheets on it too.
We took a lot of video when we were there too. We were gonna put together for you guys to look at.
Well, I'd like to see it. You know, it's one thing to have the videos, it's another thing to share the videos.
He's just been waiting for the opportune time.
We can send you some links too.
There is a thing called boots on the ground. I thank you very much, in case you didn't know. Yeah.
So, on the subject of videos and photos, I think that's another key reason why having a little bit more time to talk about this specific project in work session would be important if you guys can. So if we could put our calendars together and have you come to a planning commission work session, I think that'd be ideal, if you guys are comfortable with that. That way we can show the planning commission, we can show you guys, do a little fly-through, look at the videos and photos, you'll see what you're gonna get out of it.
When would that be?
Well, the next planning commission meeting is October, oh, I guess we do have one, we do have one on the seventeenth of this month. In fact, we do have enough time. We were gonna post that agenda today. But we could set up a work session for October seventeenth, if you get, or excuse me, September seventeenth. If that works for your schedules. If not, it would be a second Thursday of October.
Tuesday. I wish it was Thursday.
Oh, second Tuesday of October, thank you. Didn't hear what I said.
And we could have it at the beginning of the meeting at four thirty or we could even start earlier. Would you, would you come in and schedule, we can come in early?
I'm pretty open. We'll look in October eight.
See, yeah, it'd be October eighth.
I can make myself available that day.
Okay.
October the eighth.
Should we start in four?
October the eighth.
Session, that's perfect. So the planning commission will hear the proposal in their public hearing next Tuesday. They have a variety of options. They can table until after. There's some more specific designs till after they have had more discussions with you guys. They can recommend approval. And then if there are changes after their discussion with you guys, they can come back and revisit it. A couple of different ways that we can approach this. We just wanna make sure we started the public process a little bit early. And also that the public don't feel blindsided by it.
Well, let me tell you. They're gonna, doesn't matter how many times you tell them, they're gonna feel blindsided because they didn't understand it the way you're putting it, you know what I mean? It's anything less than an acre. All the work you've done for the last five years, anything less than an acre, I still hear about all the time.
Yeah.
I think this is a different concept. I mean, what they're planning to bring together here, like we talked in our commission meeting the other night. The, the West Weaver we knew growing up and even more so these guys has changed. I mean, the demographics out there have changed. The neat thing about this proposal and, and I'm doing it all off of what I viewed this site online. Spent a lot of time on that website on Google Earth and it looks like a really neat community. And that's kind of what we're building, what this would build out there. It's gonna build a new, you know, area for the community to come together. You know, we joked in the planning commission meeting the other night that, you know, Norton Commons on their website, they do this big car show and stuff down their streets and everything like that. Well, West Weaver might put our own twist on it when this comes out there. We might have a tractor show down the middle of it or something. But, I mean, I, I think this project would really bring the community together as a whole, as the changes are coming, so. I, I mean, from what I've seen, what I've done research on, I, I really like the thought of this. I agree, there's gonna be a lot of backlash because this is one of the only areas that is designated in ag out there in our general plan. But, that was adamantly done by the landowner at the time who owned it. He's gonna keep farming this forever and, you know, fifth-generation farm, they're not going anywhere and, and that's the unfortunate part. Or, all of this probably would have been in a third acre, just like, you know, the rest of the western part of the county was, so. I, I think we have a great opportunity here. You know, and, and like you said, Commissioner Fror, you know, we're gonna put a lot of units in one area. The neat thing is, it's right across from that big industrial area we've got going. We've got housing, you know, it, it might consolidate some of that growth in this western part of the state.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's what, if you look at Norton Commons, that's what they were able to do. It really is, it's not a development. It's not a housing development, it's a community. People can live, work, and play there. I mean, and that's, I would hope that's what you incorporate. Lot of green space, amphitheaters. I mean, we saw people that, and again, you had single-family homes that were, what, probably five or eight yard, eight foot side yard. But, it, it all fit in because in the back, there was a big park or, and on the streets. And this is, I'm hoping that the planning commissioner looks at that, all the infrastructure for garbage, everything else is in the back, not the front. So you have these private streets that you really felt, hey, this is a, this is a nice little community. And, and Bren's exactly right. You know, we can either do this and, and hopefully they put some density out there, or you can take every fifteen or twenty acre parcel across the county and put, you know, ten homes on it or fifteen homes and fill it up with, you know, old trucks and campers in the back. And you lose your. Why you, why you, why you got a thing for boats?
Well, the boats have to go somewhere else, sorry.
What we do with a lot of the sites we do is patchwork and you're trying to piece roads together and make everything fit. I mean, you know, my honest hope with, with this whole area is we can kind of, we've got a great section between the Weaver River, forty-seven hundred twelfth street and the river. You know, you, if that whole area could kind of fit this model, I mean, you're gonna bring a great community together and, and we don't have that patchwork, it's still gonna happen. And, and that's just the way the development goes, but I think we can do things a lot better with a project like this. It's just like JDC, we don't get a lot of opportunities to go and develop a hun, I mean, fifty acres or a hundred, let alone, you know, four hundred at a time to, to pull this off, so I, I think we have an awesome opportunity.
Two things for me, I wanna hit again on the, the ag protection. That ag protection was up to the, to the property owner. Either, either the property owner that is and is going to be was, or the property owner that was. That's a private, that's a private party thing. That doesn't have anything in my mind to do with the general plan, other than it was marked that way. Okay, so that disappears with development. The other thing that I'd like to recommend is that, and what Charlie mentioned already, and that is making this whole block at least come all the way out and I would encourage these folks to maybe try and pick up some of these other parcels if they can. It would just make that, that project even that much better. It's, it's a little, and, and not that it won't be a beautiful project as it is, but it's a little choppy and you get a little bit thin right in here. So if you could, if you could fill in some of that, it really enhances it.
I think it's a great point. I mean, we have a goal, we have a vision that we kind of know this is the direction we wanna go. We might as well, if we're gonna amend the general plan, instead of doing it by each parcel there, if we can amend that whole area, similar like we did the form base and a couple of those.
There you go.
The one thing I'll add, go ahead Jim.
No, this is just, this is a big deal.
One thing I'd add is, the reason that we're so excited about this, first and foremost is because I think you have a very kind of future planning, planning department that says, we want smart growth, we want better growth. And to Bren's point, right now, the growth is, let's maximize every ten to fifteen acre parcel. You can't have open space, there's no connectivity. It's, it's not about people, it's about yield. And if you look at these communities, I mean, this is a, this is a thirty-year project for us. I mean, this is not, this is not something that we're just gonna come in and title flip us on our, as our intention. And when you, when you do things in the long term, you plan differently. You build buildings differently because the buildings we build today are gonna enhance the value of that property in twenty years. Right? It's not, we're not just trying to make a quick buck, and so if you look at the communities that are similar to this, it, it's a long-term project and the value is created over time, not just today. And, and the, the center of it, which I think Bren hit on, is this is about building community. That's why, it's not about, it's not about cars, it's about people. It's how do people wanna live and how do they wanna connect? And so everything is centered around that. The open space, how does it, how does it promote community? The sidewalks, the streets, the shops. It's not Euclidian zoning where it's residential here and you gotta get in your car and drive down. It's, we want you to walk to the bakery or to the store or your barber shop, because that promotes community. Porches are really important and porches right by the street, because that promotes community, so. I, I just think the type of development, I think your, your plan has created this, this op, this optimal opportunity. And you need large pieces of land to reenact this, this plan. That's why we're so excited about this. And, and I think to Charlie's point, I mean, the the town architect of Norton Commons, he's done a lot of other projects, is our planner on this. And September thirtieth, you guys can come meet him and his team. There's ten people flying in.
When is that again?
Week of September thirtieth.
Can you get us a formal invitation?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send you exactly when we want you there.
Yes, we should have the schedule at the end of this week. So then they'll have slots and everything. So yes, we will get the invitation.
But we love your feedback. We love, I mean, there's a lot of stakeholders in here that, we want this to be an amazing piece for this county to, to show off and, and, and a prototype for what development should be like, so.
When, when I see this kind of development, this is what I want on the property that my family owns. I don't want one, I don't even want the one-third acres anymore. This is the kind of thing that, that does build the community and it's much more.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
One of my favorite parts of Norton Commons and Commissioner Fror and Stephanie can attest is, I was very surprised you had some single-family dwellings right next to duplexes or quads, right next to a dentist's office. And normally, when you think about that kind of thing, you think that's gonna be a mess. That's just, nothing's gonna work well together. And that community clearly works well together. I mean, you know when you're going in and buying the property that your single-family dwelling is next door to a dentist, but the dentist's office is designed in a way where it fits in really nicely with that single-family dwelling and one of the words that, one of the buzzwords that planners like to use is harmonious, creating harmonious communities of land use. One of the reasons why we used to say, houses over there and commercial over there is because they had a hard time, we had a hard time creating harmony between the two. But through various types of zoning reform, a lot of different communities are coming back to the idea of, no, this is, we can't separate the uses. We just need to figure out how to mitigate the impacts of having those, those uses together. This, this community, Norton Commons, and having a developer-driven, developer-motivated solution, I think it offers one of the best solutions, because then it's not up to us to create every little regulation or every little stipulation or standard on how they're gonna develop. Because most of those stipulations and standards aren't necessarily about their development, it's how their development plugs in with their neighbor, right? Well, they are their own neighbors for most of it. And so it will not require quite as much of that oversight from the county.
And one of the subtleties of these types of developments are the connectivity that the green spaces create. So you're actually creating a sense of gathering place, a sense of space, a sense of community. It's, and you do that through, through the development and through the architecture. And it's like, it's like Charlie's saying, it's through that smart growth principle that you create a sense of community just by the way you're placing certain, certain assets inside the development. And when you do smaller types of developments, the ten, fifteen acres, you can't do that. It's, it's virtually impossible. But when you do large planned-out developments like this, it's, it's, it's organic, it happens naturally.
And we get a lot of pushback from the ten and twenty acre subdivisions. Saying, you want that many pathways or you want that kind of sidewalk or you want these kind of amenities out of this? Claiming that maybe it's too much, but they're not looking at the bigger picture and how we're trying to keep all of these little developments connected together. From a master plan perspective, it doesn't make sense not to connect those communities. You're just bringing up the value of your property, rising tides, lived on ships in those cases.
Unfortunately, by ownership though, in some instances, and a lot of instances out there, you have small parcels just because of the way that the property has been divided down through the family over the years. So you're kind of stuck in this, in this bad position of having these twenty-acre parcels. If you have a fifty-acre parcel, that's big, that's under one ownership. So, to get to the point where we have this kind of spread out more, maybe we need to push back on the developers and say, go buy more.
Yeah, go reconstitute the original farm.
Sort, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it was contiguous.
Right.
And if not, start, you know, start trying to pick up more along the way there.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think too, well, that this whole area out there with the river where it is, I think that, that over the years of some of this light industrial happens, I think that this whole thing can really be the gem of the western county there with the river running through.
I agree.
I think it's a, I think it's really gonna be a cool place.
Our general plan talks about ten acres of open space per thousand people. That's a pretty high standard to me. Most communities don't have that much open space. Um, it's a pretty high standard to me. Most communities don't have that much open space. We've got a great opportunity where we've got a blank slate on a lot of this to. Build in some really good programmable open spaces as well as natural open spaces, uh, through these kind of master plan communities.
There's also a really good opportunity, they did kind of text on this about the infrastructure and make sure that you're right sizing the infrastructure and then it's in. That it's in, working in concert with the idea of us doing a renewable energy hub in the industrial areas. So that it becomes a compliment and an example of, these are how these, these areas can be sustainable. And you can have these large growth areas, but look at how sustainable, look at how we're doing self-sustainability. That's something I'd love to see in your proposal. And when I come to your shred, that's what I will contribute is that this has to have a sustainability component to it. Not like, we're just so tapped for resources in that area.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh. This is all fine to Danny, but what happens when you get a dingus that moves in?
I fit in.
Well, but everybody's got that neighbor, it's a system.
So in Norton Commons, they've got, the developer has self-imposed rules and regulations. They essentially operate as. A small city. They've got three, um. For lack of a better word, corporations. They've got a homeowner's association, a commercial owners' association, and a community foundation. And the community foundation is kind of the umbrella organization that is the referee between the homeowners' association and the commu, and the commercial owners' association. Um, through that, they're doing their own self-governor, governance. This is really about self-governance. So when you get a dingus who moves in. There may be a dingus because they didn't read all the rules. But the town architect, the design review committee, the foundation council won't allow certain things to happen unless they meet the standards that.
One just talking about the guy, I mean, I'm just looking a little on the thing that you've got some restaurants and stuff, but the guy that. Just is a crappy neighbor and treats the waiters and people wrong and. Lets the dog crap all over the place and doesn't clean it up, it's just, he's just a, you don't, you don't want that dude. Or do that. But what do you do on that? I, I mean, so they can kind of self-govern, say, you know, that's probably not the best place for you.
Yeah, and if he does, yeah, and if he does move in, strong HOA enforcement, having a strong HOA is gonna be important there.
You know, you're almost talking about. Wayne and I may be the only ones that understand this, but a Shangri-La kind of a place, you know?
Are you still this year?
I'm about as old as Wayne.
No, you're not.
Well, you, you know, or you could classify it as the, the rural feel, the neighbor's dog. I always tease my brother, they have some places up Radford Hills, I still get to move up and bring my pigs with me. I don't have any pigs. Get people excited, but you know, in, in all honesty, the way that I've started to think about this. And it started with that little development over by the Park and Plain City, how well that's fit into that town. And we've got a little bit of commercial along there and you're starting to see people on the sidewalks over there. And I'm thinking that people and their fathers thinking about. How they live and what they do in these neighborhoods much different than they did maybe even five or ten years ago. Because I think that if they're laid out right and look. Aesthetic to the people that not only live there, but people have come through, that it's someplace I wanna be. And I'm thinking that, uh, a lot of these issues. Might become issues, but if they are, they'd need to have some kind of a. Formal enforcement program that deals with those, but I think that that's gonna be in the minority. As long as, the only problem I have is where is people gonna put their stuff?
Yeah.
Now that, you know, Americans love their stuff.
Especially people here in the west.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you know, uh. Especially people here in the west. I, I think this thing actually governs itself better because of what it will become. Than, than a regular standard quarter or third acre subdivision. I really do, because I think people have an understanding of what this is, as they're going through the process of purchasing. And, and I think it actually, actually governs itself better than, than. I'm gonna say the majority of our unincorporated community does now. That's really, developer keeps the controlling interest in it and they get to pick who they bring into these areas and, and they have a say in that and. They don't like them, guess what, they're not gonna build there.
By the way, the developer of Norton Commons lives in Norton Commons. He drove, drove us right past his house. Uh, not to say that.
Does too.
His family does too. Not to say that we should force the developers to live in here, but, uh. It'd be, uh, those are the best kinds of communities is when the developer has a motivated self-interest in creating something great. And it's a long-term project, so they can't screw up, you know, in the first five or ten years and create something terrible. And still be expected to, to keep their thirty-year vitality, um, at Build Out.
Yeah, so the thing that makes Norton Commons work, in my mind. The developers onsite. Number two, it's a long-term, it's not, let's get in and get out in two years and sell as many homes as we can and pocket the money. He's in there for life, I mean, he started that back, what, thirty years, twenty-five, thirty years ago? A long time, and you put that in third with strong HOAs. But, yeah, Ren's exactly right. You're not going to move into a community like that. If, if you want an acre. Or two acres or three acres and a couple of pigs, you're not gonna move in there. But there's a certain group out there, I think there's more and more every day because they're called our kids and grandkids, they don't want that.
Right.
They want a place that they can call home, they don't have to worry about a bunch of yard. And they've got friends and family around them, and you can make that happen, but you've gotta have.
Yeah.
Everything in place.
Yeah, and one, one thing we mentioned in our planning commission workshop is, what, what's so unique about these places is. Kind of these two ideas of, one, it promotes free-range kids, because it's extremely safe and it's very community, has a strong community. So kids get on their bikes and they're.
Yeah.
They're out all day, they're visiting the shops, they're with friends in the open spaces, they're exploring the river, right? And then the other part is, it's age and place. It, you don't have to go to a, a rest home when you get older because you don't need to drive. You can walk to get your basic needs, and then there's a community that's looking out for you. I mean, in some ways, it's, it's really Utah. From a community-based standpoint, we're, we're very strong community and family, and the, the founder Norton Commons has. Four generations living there.
Yeah.
You have homes that are affordable, you have really expensive homes, and they all just. As Charlie said, it's this harmonious development and, and it all fits and it works really well.
They've got a couple of buildings over there that is for low-income housing. They can meet the low-income thresholds. Uh, because they're able to, first off, they've got, you know, all the incentives that, the tax incentives and whatever through, uh, low-income federal programs, but. Um, they're able to actually meet their margins through all the other projects as well, that can help these. Buildings actually and these apartments be, uh, affordable for people, the service industry, folks who, who. Want to live there and work there, and that's pretty amazing. I mean, you didn't, you wouldn't drive through that community and say there's anything low income about it.
It's a beautiful building and it's right next to some expensive homes.
Yep.
It works.
They also have a school and a YMCA, right, right there, walkable, everything's walkable. Community pools. Lot of amenities.
Anything else you'd like to ask? Mr. Grover?
I'm in a good direction, um, been happy with what Charlie and the developers have worked out. Do you have some concern when we get down to the nitty-gritty, the development agreement, making sure those specifics are in there to protect the developer and the county?
Okay, commissioners will plan on October eighth, four to six, and we'll get a, a work session going on then. I'll make sure the planning commission, all of the rest of them know on next Tuesday that, um, we're planning on doing a work session on, on their next, uh, meeting day. Get some videos and some pictures and maybe do a little fly-through.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Okay. All right, thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, I'll entertain an ocean for item seven. Second, all in favor?